It's working on Facebook. John D is having problems.
Jimmy, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you, but I still don't get it. I'm trying.
Yeah, are we on our Comcast channel or the website tonight before I begin the meeting?
No, we'll be able to post to our website in the morning.
Thank you.
My daddy is going to be disappointed again.
How's he doing, Linda?
He's doing really well.
Now we are up now.
What page?
We are live now, just. I'm gonna share it and I'll begin.
Or I said to record to the cloud is, do we have enough cloud space to do that or should we be recording locally?
I think we get no cloud space, being honest with you.
It'll be on Zoom.
Yeah, I think we do.
Regardless.
We're showing about five gigabytes, so we should be okay.
We will also be recording it on the City IT site, so we will be recording it, Jeff.
Okay, and normally I would see live on Facebook in the upper corner. I don't see that today. I assume somebody else sees that. Or Mayor's sharing it.
I do see it on Facebook, so we are live.
Okay.
Begin the meeting if everyone is ready. It is currently 6:04 and we are calling to order slightly late. The Gallatin City Council meeting for February 6th, 2021. Before we can legally begin, we need to have a vote to hold this meeting electronically. So I'm going to read this and then seek a vote from the council if they so desire. It says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders, the need to limit threat of COVID-19. The February 16th, 2021 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. Meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the council citizens of Gallatin. Join this meeting, there is a link there on the screen. You can also find that on the event on our Facebook page and on our City of Gallatin website. That is gallatinTN.gov. You can also dial in by dialing 470-381-2552 or 470-250-9358. If you're calling in, you may have to enter a webinar ID. That would be 834-2540-5916. And I do want to be clear that if you wish to participate in the meeting, you must do so through the Zoom platform. You can comment on Facebook, but we are generally all paying attention to this meeting and following that conversation. That's how you officially participate in the meeting is through the Zoom platform. We have a motion from the council to hold this meeting electronically.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion to hold the meeting electronically by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilwoman Love. I'm going to ask that Ms. Kitchell call the roll for the vote and I'm going to ask that you affirm your presence when you also vote yea or nay on whether or not to meet electronically. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Here, yes.
Councilman Alexander?
I am working with Councilman Alexander to get him connected.
Okay, Councilman Fan?
Here.
What about the other votes, Steve?
Be lost. Okay, Councilwoman George?
Here and yes.
Thank you. Councilman Hayes?
Yes, and present.
Councilwoman Love?
Here and yes.
Councilman Overton? No Councilman Overton and no vote from Councilman Alexander, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. I think Councilman Overton may again to try and reboot so he can get his camera functioning. We will be watching for he and Councilman Alexander to join the meeting. I'm mindful if we do not have been present to participate in the votes as we move along. And since Councilman Alexander is not here tonight, I'm going to have to ask, let's see, Nick Tuttle, would you pray for us this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
All right, let's pray. God, thank you so much for allowing us to meet virtually like this as we have been, but especially in these times where we're dealing with such crazy weather in our area. Lord, I pray that you just help us to continue to be safe and to continue to be kind and help one another in these difficult times. Lord, I pray that as we meet tonight, that you would bring your wisdom and your guidance on that we be able to follow you in all the decisions that we make. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
And thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Didn't mean to call you out in the blue like that. Lovely job and I appreciate it. And we love to hear from your puppy, too. I see that was. All right, the next item on the agenda for the evening is the approval of minutes from the February 2nd, 2021 Gallatin City Council.
So moved.
Second, approval by Councilman Hayes, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Are there any additions or corrections requested?
No.
Yes, so you know one wishing to make any changes and I ask that Ms. Kitchell call the roll for the vote to approve those. Please.
Vice Mayor Camp? I mean Vice Mayor Fennell, sorry, wrong paper.
I was used to that too, Ms. Kitchell. Yes.
Go back, hey. Councilman Alexander? Still not here. Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton? Still no. Mr. Overton's not back yet, so.
I'm here, but I just can't get my camera on.
Oh, okay, so you can vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and your vote is? Okay, thank you. The vote is six to zero for the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. Now's the time for public recognition on agenda-related items. We will have public recognition on non-agenda-related items at the end of the meeting, but right now, this is when the public may speak any items on the agenda. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. I'm going to ask Mr. Henshaw to moderate the call. Those who are joining by Zoom, whether they are by video or by call-in, I will tell those of you who may be calling in that if you wish to indicate that you'd like to raise your hand, you may press star nine on your phone. And then if you're online, you'll actually see where you can hover and raise your hand on those Zoom online platforms. With that, Mr. Henshaw?
Very good. Looks like we do have someone who's raised their hand. Susan Chaffin Owens. And go ahead, you have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Am I ready?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Susan Chaffin Owens. My two sisters and I are the owners of the property at 1460 Woods Road in Gallatin, seeking to become Woods Crossing. You know, I'm a lot like some people.
In here.
I don't like.
I see myself.
But I can't hear.
When our mother died.
May I interrupt, please, just for a moment? Ms. Owens, we are not hearing you, but I think it's because there is interference from those of us who are not muted. So I'm going to suggest that while we have our caller speaking, that we mute ourselves. And I think that might help. I could be wrong, in which case I'll let you know. But hold tight for just five seconds and then try to begin again.
Okay, shall I start again?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll just start at the beginning with a thanks to you for allowing me to speak this evening. Are you hearing me? Let me ask before I continue. Mayor Brown, can you hear me? I'm Susan Chaffin Owens. My two sisters and I are the owners of the property at 146 Woods Ferry Road in Gallatin, seeking to become Woods Crossing. You know, I said a minute ago, I'm a lot like some of the folks who may be listening tonight. I don't like change. When our mother died in 2005, my vision for our family property was that it would stay just as it was and always remain a hobby farm. Maybe one of my siblings or one of our children would want to maintain the Chaffin presence on this wonderful piece of land. And if that didn't happen, I was confident that there would surely be a buyer who would want to farm on a small scale as our father had done for such a long time. For many of these 15 years, I prayed and hoped this would happen. But gradually, we all realized it would not. In the last couple of years, we've accepted this and had to begin looking for other options. When this offer came from you all to buy our property and develop it, I felt so sad. Our lives as children on Woods Ferry been idyllic, not without problems, of course, but growing up in the countryside was a blessing and a privilege, and I'm grateful. I struggled to accept the changes this would bring to our home place, tearing down what our father had so lovingly built, destroying some of the trees he planted and that we climbed it. It was hard even to imagine it. But then one day, I realized something that would completely change my thinking. This land we have cherished would now become a home to many families. Many children will run and climb and play and have and enjoy these acres. And that realization made it okay. It was then for our property to have a new life. I know that this will mean change for the community, but this gradual transformation already begun with Clear Lake Meadows Development, which probably was under construction prior to the year 2000, and Patterson Farm Development, which began building in 2017. The planned continuation of Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard will further these ongoing changes. In a way, I'm speaking for those folks who will be most impacted by the Woods Crossing development, yet have no voice in this discussion, namely those families who house built here, whose kids will play here, the people who will make friends here, those whose futures will be bound up in this land and its promise. They will invest in the community, vote here, become active participants in the growing Gallatin economy, and hopefully make significant contributions to life in Sumner County. And so after 15 years, I am ready to urge that Gallatin City Council vote to allow this well-playing development to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If anyone else would like to raise their hand, now's the time to do that. Raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen.
We're done.
Analysts, make sure. I believe that's everyone.
Thank you so much. I see no one else indicating that they was just speaking, Mr. Fennell. So I was trying to say thank you and I was muted, so thank you. And I did start her timer over, so that's why it was a little longer than five minutes, folks. That concludes public recognition on agenda-related items. Mayor's comments this evening, I have just a few. I want to say a big thank you to all who are working this week. As you know, City Hall was, City buildings were closed today and will be tomorrow and could potentially be on Thursday and who knows about Friday. But we've had plenty of people who have still been working to take care of our roads, to actually pick up the trash. They worked on that all day today. Mr. Wilkinson said it was going very slow, but going. And so for everyone in the public, know that they are trying to pick up. It just may not be that all roads may be serviceable, but they are going to do their best. But our sanitation department has been working hard. Our roads crews have been working around the clock. I think they've been working 12-hour shifts to keep the roads cleared. And the utility departments as well to address the issues that are happening there before the storm came. I actually got to spend about 12 hours fixing a broken water main out on Main Street this past weekend. So I bet a bunch of you saw our public utility guys at work out there. So so many thanks to all who are working to keep the city running, taking care of people. And I should say, that's not just in our government sector, that's in the private sector as well, because we have people out there driving wreckers and of course, working in our hospitals and grocery stores. And now that you were thought of, recognized, prayed for, and thanked, and we hope you all stay safe and stay well. Beyond that, I just want to say that this is Mr. Zach Wilkinson's final official day, although I don't know how he's possibly going to bow out tomorrow with all the needs we're going to have from his department. But Mr. Wilkinson has been a tremendous asset to the city and as I've said before, he will be missed. He has built a very strong department and has done a great job. And I know this council echoes my thanks to him for all that he has done. Mr. Wilkinson, you want to say anything?
Sure, absolutely. Like you're speaking, our crews have been working around the clock since Sunday night and they've done a great job. They did get the trash picked up for everybody that's usually scheduled on Monday today, so things went well there. But I just want to thank this council and all the department heads, just everybody from everything that y'all have done to allow me to just kind of prosper in the city. And there's a lot of great Public Works employees and employees all across and all departments that mean a lot to me and just can't put into words how much I appreciate everything y'all have done to allow our department to succeed. And just what a great place the city is and thankful for just my time here. But as Mayor said, yeah, I'll be around a lot this week for sure. We got a lot going on. Everybody's doing a great job. They'd be fine without me, but I'll definitely be around to make sure we handle all the challenges of the weather.
Well, we wish you all the best. We know you will continue to be a champion of our city and we're going to get an opportunity to work with you. And we've really enjoyed seeing your son with you there this evening, too.
Hope he had clothes on.
He was fine. All right, we're going to move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is second reading on ordinance 0210-2 and Councilwoman Love, you're going to be recognized for it.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of an ordinance appropriating funds from the 2021 general obligation bond issue in the amount of $11,112,853.25 and $700,000 from the general fund for capital projects. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Love, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Is there any discussion? Seeing no one indicating they wish to discuss, I'm going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
There you go, Jimmy.
Councilman Overton?
Yes, he's connecting. There you go. Should be connected now. Unmute yourself, Jimmy, and we should be able to hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Seven i's, zero nays.
Had to get on my cellphone.
Well, thanks, Jimmy. Councilman Overton, apologize. Okay, passed unanimously. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 02102-3, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading on appropriations, 127,769 from the project Warhawk of a building code department expenses. I so move.
I have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion on this? Second reading on ordinance 02102-3, Ms. Kitchell, if you call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Second reading on ordinance 02102-3 passes unanimously. Item number three is second reading on ordinance 02102-4, Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 14, fences, and I so move.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Anyone wishing to discuss this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02102-4, Ms. Kitchell, with the roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes. I get two votes.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
And did I miss somebody? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
So Mayor, seven i's, zero nays. I'm sorry.
Passed unanimously. Claudia, Ms. Kitchell, I don't think everybody realizes that you're recovering from foot surgery, so you're.
Yes, I still, yes.
Be with us this evening, so we appreciate it and will certainly.
Thank you.
Grace for any challenges. I'm just impressed you're with us. Second reading on ordinance 02102-4 does pass unanimously. Moving to item four, which is first reading on ordinance 02102-5, and Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning a 16.78 acre portion of a parcel from the R-20 Low Density Residential District to the PGC Plan General Commercial District, rezoning a 2.05 acre parcel of a lot from the MU Mixed Use District to the PGC Plan General Commercial District, and also rezoning a 3.80 acre portion of a parcel from the R-20 Low Density Residential District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and rezoning a 3.04 acre portion of a lot from the Mixed Use District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District with the Preliminary Master Development Plan for the goat farm totaling 25.67 acres located south of Nashville Pike and east of Shoots Lane. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fennell, opening the floor for discussion.
I'd just like to say that I appreciate this developer or builder working with us and changing the apartments to condominiums.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Love.
I just want to know, do I say everybody tonight? I didn't call everybody's name, but Alexander.
They didn't call your name either?
No, you called Fan. I second that motion on Mr. Hayes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I go by what I see on my screen. I apologize.
Okay, I look like all of my name.
I will. Now you get a little lighter on your box and that's how I'm guessing who said it. Especially when people step on each other speaking, sometimes you might blackout somebody else's noise. So I'll keep an eye on you. That's Councilman Alexander. Anyone else wishing to discuss this? Anyone looking like they do? So I'm going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you. First reading on ordinance 102-5 is passing. Moving on to item five, first reading on ordinance 02102-6, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading on the course of the City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning three partial totaling 655.44 plus or minus acres from the RR Residential County District to the RA PRD Medium Density Residential Plan Residential Development District, 435.6 plus or minus acres from the Rural Residential County District to the MU Mixed Use District, 132.92 plus or minus acres from the RR Rural Residential County District to the PBP Planned Business Park District, 86.92 plus or minus acres with a preliminary master development plan for the Bowles property located north of Red River Road and east of Highway 109, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning analysis, repealing conflicting ordinance, providing for severability and providing for effective date in ISO mode.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Overton, and opening the floor for discussion.
Mayor? Go ahead, Linda. Councilwoman Love, you said a Q first. I'm sorry. Ladies first.
John, I was just going to say what I had said earlier when we met about this last week is that I like the active adult portion and I like the open space that they have in this plan, but I just don't like that it is so dense and that they cannot commit to changing the apartments over.
This, this, are you, can I say something, Mayor?
I was going to say, thank you, Ms. Love. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Fennell.
Nick, are you pretty much done with this? Have you signed off on this? Or my concern is that such a big development, we need to defer this item to go back into work session again?
This is Nick, Councilman Fennell. There's still a lot of work to be done here. We did receive a, some preliminary traffic analysis, some traffic projections and things, but there really aren't many recommendations that are being made from those and those things won't come until we get on into the final master development plan phases. And that's when we really expect to see all those kinds of things come along. You know, for instance, there may be some improvements that would need to be made to the Red River Road and State Route 109 intersection based on the development and what kind of impacts it may have. There may be some improvements along Red River Road. And actually, the planning commission did make some comments about wanting to see a shoulder added to Red River Road based on the impacts of the development. But what we're seeing right now with this zone change, you know, none of those things are really being shown on the plan. They haven't really planned for those things, but we would expect them to come when they come through with those final master development plans. And we'll see some more recommendations come from their traffic impact studies that we would adopt.
Can I, I'd like to say something now. So I think this is a great piece of property and certainly the owners do have the right to develop this property. And I know some of ours, I've known them for a long time. I think the plans that are out there is really good. And I've said that from the beginning, but my only concern is rental units right there. That's the only reason I'm really concerned about the property and the density of it. Am I correct in saying there's like 900 rentals that's gonna be on this particular piece of property, Bill McCord?
That's correct, on the MU portion of the property.
And I would like to go on record.
Maximum.
I'd like to go on record to support this development, but I will support it with an amendment. This time, I'd like to amend the ordinance. I'll, I'd like to amend it to if they take the 900 apartments or rentable pieces of property off of this and put 750 townhouses in there, I'd like to amend it to that with no rentable houses on the property. I'd like to put that form of a motion.
And that would be an offer and amendment. Ms. Tom McCauley, is that something that we need to ask of the developer before we? Because we're...
The developer, John Haas, has raised his hand, yes. Needs to respond to that.
Do does this council want to allow Mr. Haas to speak?
Mayor, I think it'd be fair to say 750 units, but with to say they're not, that they all gotta be townhomes, I can't see the developer wanting to go with that. I can understand them if they would consider reducing it down to 750 units of whatever kind they put on there, and I'm not even sure they know what they're gonna put on there yet. But I can see that they might go down to 750 units, but to say they're all gonna be sellable units, I don't think it'd be... I don't think it'd be fair to ask them to do.
Well, the truth is, it's going to be market-driven.
That's right, exactly right.
But how we get to that place, it'll be obvious what that is.
It's market-driven, but for us, we're driven by what the people we represent say and want.
And...
They don't want that.
And y'all got to take in consideration what the mayor said last week, too. You know, we've put a lot of time and a lot of money into this road, and we were cooping our money back from this road by this development here. That's what we've got to look at, too, not just the density, which I'm against, but just we were cooping our money back by what this type of development's going in here.
Um, I, I appreciate that, Councilman Hayes. I am concerned, I'll remind everyone, this is an almost $40 million road, and it was built for economic development within our city. And so we want to reap the greatest rewards we can possibly get from that investment. And I'm concerned about how soon this development is talking about coming online. I don't know that I heard this discussed in our meeting, but I did read somewhere that they were looking at a 2022 completion of a part of their housing, and that's expecting a whole lot from the city before we have any returns on that investment to actually fund the, the services that they're going to be needing in that part of the city. So, I, I, I think this is a really big, really impactful project, and we need to proceed with, you know, absolute certainty that we have our services provided for and that we are getting the proper return on investment for us that from that road. You know, certainly, the property owners are benefiting by us putting that rock, that, that road there, and in this case, it's developers wishing to purchase property, and, and I, I know that in time, you know, the perfect, or not the perfect, but that we're going to get really good development there. I just don't want us to be satisfied with this as it is, because it's the first thing that's come through on this.
Right. I don't want to see us sell ourselves short, and I think that's what we're doing. I mean, not that it's not a good development, but we've got a major investment in this road, major.
Council, I want to remind you, the way the ordinance is written now, it was written as it was presented to the planning commission, and we discussed this at the work session. So, the acreages that are identified in that ordinance are those presented and recommended by the planning commission. I want to remind you that we did have a discussion at the work session, the council work session, that the applicant had proposed at the request of the Economic Development Agency to modify that acreage. So, at the, at least at the second reading, if that's what you intend to adopt is a modified design, which applies more acreage to the Planned Business Park, which may, you know, include more tax-friendly type properties. I don't know that, but you...
Yeah, we knew.
I'll make that as a motion at the second reading.
Was that, was that exact acreage determined, Mr. McCord?
Yes, they had provided that modified design at the request of EDA after it went to the planning commission, and essentially, a couple days before it was actually put before the council at the work session. So, the acreages will decrease a little bit of the mixed-use area and a slight decrease in the R8 Medium Density Residential Plan Residential Development area, and increasing the Planned Business Park area from about 87 acres up to 109 acres.
You have those exact numbers for us if this does go to second reading?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor, I'm, I'm, I just, I just wanted to say, I am here, I'm available to answer when you're...
Okay, thank you. Right now, what we have is we have a motion for an amendment. We, I don't think, have a second, because I was asking if that amendment was okay and whether to seek input from the applicant. So, right now, I just have a motion amended on the 900 units down to 750, asking rental units, but the owner occupied units. I guess I'm saying that in case anyone would like to offer a second to that amendment. If not, it will die for lack of a second. Okay, that, that amendment is going to die for the lack of a second. I will move on now with discussion, and if there are any more questions, I will call on the representative in just a minute, but I want to see if there's any further discussion from this council or any questions that you want to pose before we have him speak.
Mayor, Mayor, I, I, I just want to say, I, I realize this is a real large development, but what it's taking me the most, I guess, is we only dealing with like one developer. And I know some townhouses would probably be in there, but I definitely don't want to cut out all the rental property, because everybody cannot afford a townhome. I know, I wish they could, but we got to think about those people that just moved in here. I know, like we stated last week when we discussed this, and we had a meeting with chambers, and everybody in that meeting, we would ask them about apartments and renting and buying houses and stuff, and everyone in that meeting, they remind everyone, stated that the first thing they had was an apartment to rent before they can move on up further. So, everybody just don't have that flexibility of the income to just move in townhome. So, just, let's just keep that in mind for everybody as well.
Well, I was there at that meeting also, and that is great, Councilman Alexander, everybody raised their head right there. But I can assure you that, and, and I'm, I'm not against apartments, don't get me wrong. I'm not against them at all. I'm just worried about how many we got in area. But I can tell you this, sitting for 14 days out in the early voting with 24,000 people walking in front of me, their main concern is apartments in the city of Gallatin. Their perception is that they were flooded with them. Now, I did say something to Mr. Fenton last week about trying to get a number of percentages of how many people, how many apartments were still, how many the percentage of occupied versus non-occupied.
And we've been working on that, Mr. Fennell. It's, it's been difficult these last few days, you might imagine, but yes, we've been talking to those folks, and I hope to have that soon.
You know, I would have thought that if, if we could have passed it with townhouses, then if the market was to change, and certainly, it's gonna be years down the road before they start these apartments, is what I've been told, then they could try to rezone it there.
I'd like to ask you a question. The $4 million investment in, that was done for the economic development, what was, I'm a little bit confused as to why this did not fit in there? Pardon me? The $400 million that was invested. Okay, why is this project not conducive to what's going in, that, for the investment that was made there? The bread was a $40 million.
Forty million, yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not saying all of it is not, I'm just saying that we know that residential in itself does not potential, it does not cover all of the services that the city or the county provides. We have done very well as a city by having a very, very diverse economy with our businesses, our jobs, our manufacturing, our industry, our hospital, our schools, and, and our residences. And, and those are, you know, multifamily and single family. And so, this road was built to attract office investment and business investment, and, you know, we have, we have a lot of residents who has come online in recent years, and we have a lot more than is planned to come online. I continually worry about that whole situation of us developing lots of neighborhoods out in, in spokes, because that's a burden for everything from maintenance of streets to service of trash to our police and fire covering roads to get to areas that are not within kind of the circle that is the city, if you will. So, it, you know, it's kind of, for me, I guess it's kind of a philosophical thing about what is the, the best path forward. And I do, you know, this road, this road was planned a long, long time ago. The construction actually began after I was elected, but the funding happened before I was elected. And it is a great road. It's going to be a wonderful northern loop around our city. It's going to help with some traffic congestion, but the opportunity is there for it to be really great business development.
Can we hear, can we hear from Mr. Haas?
Ms. Georgia, also, in my opinion, needs to be more of a limited access road, too, to keep it flowing well, which is not always somewhere you would think about being a lot residential, but then I'm not a planner, and I'm certainly not a developer. Okay, Ms. Councilman Overton, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Can we hear from the vote from Mr. Haas? Can we hear from?
Is this council okay with suspending the rules and allowing Mr. Haas to speak?
Yes.
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 Mr. Haas, your hand is raised, you're unmuted. Feel free to go ahead.
Good evening, council members, and thank you. Of course, I do want to just begin by saying, my name is John Haas. I'm a principal with Edge Planning Landscape Architecture and Urban Design. I'm representing Culture Land on the, on the Bowles family parcel. I do want to say a couple things very quickly and then respond to some of the questions that came up, and obviously, I'll be available to answer any additional questions if you're not satisfied with those responses or if I missed something. First of all, I want to say clearly that this is a very complex property and project. The road itself was complex and getting that together. And I think Mayor Brown mentioned in the last meeting about even larger regional context that this potential development has from a traffic standpoint. And we agree with that 100%, and we've been working on this project for three-plus years, even down to actually 10 years back, we helped to determine where those limited access points were on the Albert Gallatin Extension, and I'll, I'll just remind everyone that we have not moved those, relocated those, added any, we've not done anything other than what's already approved and being built out there today from an access standpoint. But with that said, we're in agreement with all staff comments, and we look forward to continuing this discussion and hopefully getting to public hearing if you all see fit, so that we can engage in that conversation there. We're continuing to have conversations, continuing to look for ways to improve the plan. And as was stated earlier, we have submitted a revised plan. It's on file. The plans were filed, the cover sheet was filed per staff request with all the new data on it in terms of acreages and so on. So, with that said, we would respectfully request that you allow us to move forward tonight and continue this conversation. Couple of things I want to respond to. I think I can say respectfully, respectfully understand the request for 750 units and for sale. Townhomes were mentioned. I, I can say unequivocally, the client's response to that is, he is unable to do that. Particularly the 750 townhomes, I don't think anyone wants to see 750 plus the couple hundred that we have approved in the active adult. I don't think we want to see 1,000 townhomes at this intersection. I don't think anybody wants to see that. Whatever those, those units are, and that's really what we're trying to do, is be flexible enough to allow for some for-sale product. We would expect of those 900 that some of those are gonna be for-sale product. They may be townhomes, they may be two-story condominiums. The, the market is gonna decide that. A lot of different things are gonna decide that. But I can say that limiting that to for-sale, we, we cannot agree to that. I think we can continue to talk about the number of units, if that's a concern. We, we can talk through that. I do want everyone to keep in mind that our entitlements, there's a, there's a focus on the MU, on the 900 units. That's, that is the maximum number of units that could be built with FMDP approval. But there's also, because it's mixed use, there is also a little over a million square feet, 1.1 million square feet of office and retail. I want everyone to just bear with me for a minute and understand that the acreage, the 128 acres within the MU area, the 132 acres, some of that overlaps. So, if 30 acres of that becomes retail or a grocery store or an office building, that translates to less residential units in the end run. So, we want to be flexible, and that's, and I think that, like I said, that's where maybe the number we can continue to talk about. If you like, we can talk about it tonight, but I think that's part of the larger conversation. But I, I can tell you that my client could not agree to the, to the for-sale units of those 750. In regards to economic rewards for this property and the 44 million dollar road, we are very aware of that. Of course, the Bowles family has been very aware of it for a long time. I think when we came upon the land and looked, looked at with, with the family and start talking about planning for the land, again, I go back to the uses here are consistent with what the land use plan is for the city currently. We have moved those bubbles around, but this is also the important thing. There's over 3 million, 3.1 million square feet are entitled for office with this plan. That is a lot of office. And we think by adding more acreage, it just gives you a market where the demand would be not quite there. And so, believe me, and we, we talked about this last time, and I meant to call Mr. Fenton and tell him personally, but I'll have to say it now, so I apologize, but he mentioned our clients, Culture Land, having consultants, business park consultants on the line, and, and I'd spoken with them. Actually, that very day I had spoken with, we had 12 different callers talking about the success of this business park without Mr. Fenton. And saying, here's the contacts I have, here's the users I have, here's what we think would be a great fit. We want to do everything possible to fill up that business park just as fast, if not faster, than what Mr. Fenton does with the right users and the right jobs, and hopefully, get to a point where we've created a demand where now you can make a selection of the users you want. That's what we're trying to do here. I, I would say that there is some tinkering to do with the mix in terms of residential, single-family, and, and the Planned Business Park in the mixed you, but I think it's, it's in a pretty good place. I, I would say also that, you know, having respected that investment and, and dealing with this, all of it fits together, all of it works together, and it is maybe more single-family than we had accounted for. But I will say this in terms of economic impact, and I can only speak in generalities. I do not have the numbers in front of me, but I think there's probably some realtor brokers on the line that can tell us that... But I think there's probably some realtor brokers on the line that can tell us that. The value of the land alone for the residential in the mixed use. Is in some cases triple of what the land value is for the planned business park land, just by the rezoning. Um, I don't know how that translates to an economic impact on Gallatin, but I can tell you that. Um, that in the active adult where we talk about the active adult. Forty-four million dollars that is as an investment for the road, we are respectful of that. This client is prepared to spend upwards of ten million dollars on a swimming pool in his community. He's making an investment as well and uh, I would just say, um, hopefully that, that addresses your questions. But I'll, I'll be available to answer any additional, thank you for the time, uh, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate the information, um, and that, and I do understand that, you know, this company is looking to make an incredible investment and it is. Quite an impressive development, but what I worry about is that revenue stream coming back to the city. In a way that we can actually provide the services that are going to be required, can you speak to the timeline of your plans?
Uh, yes, we have a phasing plan, I don't know if we can pull that up or not, but I, I can speak again in generalities that. Um, if we were to move forward and things were to go smoothly. Uh, they are prepared to begin construction as soon as possible on the infrastructure and site work. For the active adult portion, the first phase of that, which might be a hundred and fifty lots, something in that neighborhood. Um, I believe the amenity is part of that first phase, so it comes in right up front. Uh, that would be part of the first phase, if everything went ultra smooth from tonight forward. They might be able to turn dirt over in the fall and possibly deliver lots to the builders in the spring. But I don't think we've discussed anticipating having homes available in spring of twenty-two, that's probably more like fall. Late fall of twenty-two, I would imagine. Um, and then from there, we would jump across the street, maybe concurrently doing some site work on the. Uh, non-age restricted, single family, so the idea is to create a gateway, extend utilities. As development extends, that's another way from an economic development standpoint. That we've found makes a lot of sense is instead of extending the utility down to the business park and saying. Let's go, let's go fill that business park, we're building our way there, right down Albert Gallatin, because there are no utilities in Albert Gallatin. Um, so our client will be, will be uh working to, to install those. And then from there, um, we really, like I say, stick along Albert Gallatin, the extension out to the. Um, New Interchange and it jumps over to Red River Road. Um, where we will eventually build that connector between those two. Um, and, and again, a lot of it's market driven, if the, if the home sites are selling quickly, they'll. Move right into phase two or three of the home sites, the beautiful thing about a mixed use plan is. And particularly this plan because of the access points is, if, if you wanted to start in the business park or if Mr. Fenton were to. Um, procure a user uh three months from now, we could get in there in three months and start site work on it. And getting utilities to them, so we can kind of go a lot of different directions here, it's. Um, uh, like I said, I commend everyone that's been involved with the city and this property. Ms. Mayor, you mentioned how long you've been uh, uh, working on the road, but. Um, there's just been some wonderful insight from a planning perspective into this property. And what it could be and what it could mean to the city, we think it's a, 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 you know, it's going to have a tremendous impact on the city. And create jobs and, and uh do a number of things.
So, so what's the ti- what's a, what's a timeline, what, what would be your goal to have it built out?
All of it. Um, well, I will say this, that, you know, that certainly the economy normally moves in cycles, particularly development. Uh, you know, the, the, the uh economics of development moves in cycles. We were on a really long cycle and then the pandemic hit and. Um, things are still chugging along pretty good, but if things stayed like right now, which is as stable as I can describe it right now. Um, you know, that might be a ten-year build out for the whole thing, but this thing could happen in five. Um, I think that's probably unlikely, I think it's more likely to take fifteen than it is to happen in five. So it's probably happening, a majority of it happens in the next five to eight years, five to ten years. So you'll have parcels available, you know, really the retail is the big question. Or the office user is a big question, we've, we talked about things on that call that I cannot mention in a public forum. But potential users that they are the type, we call them Walmart users. If you land that user, you automatically got four more users that are coming in to be as close to them as they can be. And we were discussing one of those users. Um, and things can fill up very quickly that way and you can have a major impact that way, so. Uh, you know, i- it's, it's probably a fifteen-year project. Um, for, for total completion, but a lot of things, I think in a lot of places you won't notice that. Cause it might be a back parcel or back up against the woods or something like that.
I realize it's largely unknown, and I'm laughing at my notes because it says ten years or five years, likely fifteen, but could be five.
I'm sorry if I talk circles, but I, it's like asking how much that, how much will that house cost?
Um, ladies and gentlemen of the council, do you have any questions for Mr. Haas?
I have a few, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Fan.
Does anybody have figures on approximately how many jobs the business park will create?
I would guess it's going to depend on what those businesses look like, I mean, I, I think that'd be a hard thing to project out, um, Mr. Haas.
I, I'll have those numbers, but I can say this, and I, and I think um. Mr. Fenton was going to pull together some other numbers, I don't know if that was for tonight or another night, but I can say this, that. One number that you can use on business park general office is ten thousand square feet per acre. So um, you know, if, if you look at the acreage, we're a little higher than that because that's because of the user. But if you, if you just said, we're going to have one million square feet of office space over there. Um, you know, uh, for each thousand square feet, it used to be you could easily say eight employees. Today, it might be four, it might be three, but uh let's say it's four, so we've got a round number. Um, on a million square feet, you know, times, what, what, you know, a million square feet divided by a thousand times four. Is how many jobs that can go there very easily. Um, I think it's hard to say a job wouldn't go somewhere else in Gallatin. Or what we're trying to do is say from a regional perspective. What can we do to help Gallatin in search of these users, many of which other nearby communities are in search of? What can we do to give them a competitive advantage and, and that's what we've tried to do. Um, and, and I think it would be the best problem for everyone involved if. Mr. Fenton had to start looking for another ninety acres of planned business park somewhere, because this one's filled up.
Okay, I got a couple of more questions too. Does anybody have an approximate figure on how much revenue the city will, how much more revenue the city will have? Once this is subdivided and starts paying taxes?
We have not calculated that, we can make that calculation for the next hearing and bring that information to you.
Okay, now I'm a believer that grocery stores are traffic control, cause I think people, if you've got a major grocery store. In the area, it keeps traffic off the road because they're going to travel. A less distance to get to their groceries, what kind of retailer you, do you have planned for this area?
Well, I, I can tell you at the top of the list is a grocery store. Um, and the difference between this location and the one, um, let's say a mile down. Um, Vietnam veterans that's looking for a grocery store is we've got, um. The rooftops of the active adult, which they know are going to shop at that grocery store every other day. And so you, you have a better chance of getting a grocery store, you will be looking at neighborhood services in general. Um, I don't think, I could be surprised, but I don't think this is going to be a Walmart site. Or a Dick's Sporting Goods site or a, um, it will mostly be neighborhood services. Retail services, restaurants, some entertainment. Probably, I, I don't even know if anybody's doing Big Box right now. So that type of retail may not happen.
Do you have the business park and the retail square footage broke down?
Yes, sir, it's um, the maximum entitlements for the business park is two million square feet. And then actually in the mixed use retail or office. That could be a dentist office, it could be a eyeglass store, is one point one million square feet, so if you split it up, it might be half a million a piece.
Thank you.
Are those how your questions, Councilman Fan?
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else with questions or, or wish to discuss before we call for a vote?
Mayor, I'd like to address um, Mr. Fan's question as well, for good. Mister Fan, we are preparing an uh, uh, annexation study for the property, because it is being annexed. And we're going to address a lot of the fiscal impact analysis based on their plan, that will be included in that report, so that's being prepared right now.
I like to kick the cannon down the road till I get these figures.
And we can, I believe we'll, we'll have that either at the next council meeting or certainly before second reading.
Okay.
There is a public hearing too, right, Mr. McCord?
That's right, that's scheduled for the, uh, what's it, March second.
Anyone else with anything before we um bet on this? All right, this is, um. First reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash six and Ms. Kipple.
Okay, Vice Mayor Fennell.
No.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George. Councilwoman George.
Sorry, yes.
Councilman Hayes.
No.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Four yeses and three nos, Mayor.
First reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash six passes. Next item on the evening. Um, first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash eight and Councilman Overton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, this is an ordinance, City of Galveston, Kentucky, Tennessee, rezoning. Two parcels totaling thirty-six point five nine eight acres from rural residential county to R forty lower. To R forty low density residential county and R forty low density residential district to RS. Medium, uh. Development plan for Woods Crossing located uh west of Woods Fair Road and south of Nichols Lane on fourteen sixty Woods Fair Road. Authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning outlets, repelling conflict of orders, providing for severability. And providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Welcome.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion.
Mayor, my ass.
Um, Vice Mayor Fennell, you recognize?
David Calhoun, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I had a Miss Posey call me today and I'm sure she calls some other council members and she lives down in the swag. Down in the bottom of that area and she's really concerned about flooding and the sewer going through her piece of property. Uh, are we going to make this any worse as far as flooding anymore, this probably is a big tunnel. Question also, I don't want to make this problem any worse by this development, if anything, I want to make it better for her. Can you or Nick Tuttle address that?
We've been working with the developer to um, to connect that property in as gravity sewer. As a backup, they have been looking at a uh, a pump sewer which will take it a different route. I've talking, I've spoken with Miss Posey in the past, uh. I really don't know why the sewer line would cause her any more problems.
I understand that.
And I, I did suggest that she talked to the, the developer about correcting some of the drainage problems that she felt were there during this process.
Do we have the developer here or representative alive?
We do.
Somebody's mic'd up and you can't hear.
Someone has the television, something in the background.
Councilman Hayes, can you hear me, I think it's coming from through your speaker.
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you mute your microphone, I think that would help us with the other noises that were happening. Thank you, very good, um, yes, we do have the representatives here, are there any um further discussions? You guys would like to hold before we call from them? We have um, Ms. Bonham and Mr. Dewey on line. When Ms. Bonham is passing, Mr. Dewey is two representatives of the project.
Hillary, can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you understand my question, my concerns, Miss Posey?
I do, yes, sir, and we, we've spoken with Mrs. Posey and um originally, um, we had, sorry, can you hear me?
Ms. Bonham, let me interrupt you just a second, I do need this council to suspend the rules and allow people, you guys to speak. So if the council will just let me know that you are okay with suspending the rules as you did before, you can unmute yourself and say, go ahead, or you can nod.
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay, great.
Go ahead, thank you. Sure, sure, thank you all so much, we, we spoke with Miss Posey several months ago about her concerns and. Um, originally, we had approached um, both she and her husband about acquiring a sewer line easement, which um, they, they declined. And we were going to try to have the sewer line easement about thirty foot from their property line, and they requested us to move it fifty feet if we were going to do it. Not on their property, which we, we've moved that, and they continued to mention having some issues regarding stormwater, so. Um, after speaking with engineering, I know Michael Dewey, our engineer, has conducted a, a, a study just to see. How, what our storm drainage system would do to impact their property, and Michael, would you mind sharing that information?
Yes, this is uh, Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
So we've, we did study all of the stormwater uh basins that we have proposed, I think there's five or six. Total that uh, that we have proposed on the site um now. And uh, we would be actually reducing the, the amount of um runoff, the uh flow rate. Um, uh downstream of, of this property. Um, we, we would be required to do that no matter what, but we've, we've run the volumes on this uh per. Uh, some discussions with staff and, and we have uh made sure that there's adequate room for. Uh, for the stormwater areas as currently designed.
Okay, thank you guys.
Nick Tuttle, do you feel like, you feel like they've addressed the stormwater issues?
This is Nick, uh, Mr. Overton, they, at this point, they haven't submitted those uh for us to analyze. Since again, we're just here at the PMDP and annexation. Uh, but we certainly will, will be paying attention since we do have a lot of topography in this area and. Stormwater can quickly get away from you, um, and so, uh, we, we're going to be, um, being sure that uh. We're, we're careful and just as Mr. Dewey has spoken about, uh, I think. I think it's just, it's probably very particular watershed where they're analyzing several watersheds. And so, I know that we have had some flooding problems or issues with the creeks in the area of Woods Fair Road. And so, yeah, we're gonna be paying very close attention to that as they do submit those things to us.
Thank you, Mr.
Anyone else with any questions of the developers, or any discussion amongst yourselves? Are you ready to vote on this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance O2102-8, and Ms. Kipper will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you. Ordinance O2102-8 does pass unanimously on first reading. Item number seven is first reading on ordinance O2102-9, and Vice Mayor Fennell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance appropriate funds for civic center pool repairs change order. With that, I do motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Fennell. Was that Councilwoman George?
Love. Love.
Okay, Councilwoman Love. So I have a motion, something on the floor for section nine. With that, Ms. Kipper will call the roll for the vote on ordinance O2102-9.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Ha.
Yes.
Tony Frieso.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you. Ordinance O2102-9 passes unanimously. Moving to item eight is resolution R2102-12, Councilman.
Yeah, this is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Galatin, Tennessee, for Foxland Phase Six Section Two. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? Ms. Kipper, if you would call the roll for the vote on resolution R2102-12.
Mayor, are you ready for a vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's breaking up, so it's hard sometimes.
You're getting done, I apologize, but yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven eyes, zero nays.
Passing, moving 1.9 resolution R2102-19, Councilwoman George, you're recognized. Resolution authorizing the City of Galatin to participate in the Public Entity Partners Property Conservation Matching Grant Program. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion?
I don't remember what that is. I hate to tell you that.
Ms. Tom McCauley, it is, it's 100% grant. You want, I'll let you describe. We do it each year.
Yes, it's a reimbursement grant. It's for money that's already spent, and it's for some expenses in the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is resolution R2102-19. Ms. Kipper, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
That was seven eyes and zero noes. I believe Ms. Kipper is frozen again, so the resolution does pass unanimously. Moving on to item number 10, resolution R2102-20, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Charles DeWes construction for the widening and repaving of Airport Road from Gregory Drive to Hartswell Pike. I so move.
Second.
One motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Resolution R2102, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven eyes, zero nays.
Okay, thank you very much. That resolution does pass unanimously. Item 11 is resolution R2102-21, Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Linda Love and Eileen George to the Rosemont Board, and I so move, and y'all have fun.
Second, y'all have fun.
It is fun, Jimmy.
Too many women on that board. Too many women.
That's why we needed you, Sean.
No.
I nominate Sean to join you.
I second that.
I mean, Councilman Fan has made the motion. Who's the second?
I do.
Councilman Alexander with the second. All right, y'all want to discuss that any further? You want Ms. Kipper to call the roll for the vote?
Call the roll for the vote.
Go ahead, Ms.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yep.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Absolutely.
Mayor, seven eyes, zero nays.
Okay, resolution R2102-21 passes unanimously. Ms. George and Ms. Love will be representing us on the Rosemont Board. That concludes.
Meeting with the snow and all.
I'm sorry, you're missing the meeting?
We were supposed to go last Thursday and couldn't go, and now this Thursday doesn't look promising either.
No, we only get some virtual meetings going for you guys too. So thank you, thank you both for your willingness to serve. For the public that may not know, Rosemont is owned by the City of Galatin, but it is run Board of Directors, and the City of Galatin has representatives on that board. And now, Ms. George and Ms. Love will be two of ours. So that concludes the regular agenda this evening. We move now to other business. I'd ask if any members of this council do have other business to bring forward at this time.
Do, may I want to ask Mr. Nick Tuttle a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Alexander.
Mr. Tuttle, last year, I don't know whether you remember or not, I was asking you about what would it cost to put some sidewalks out there by Howard School? I passed a wit barbecue hookup there. Did you ever sue that? Or if you didn't, if you were looking into that for me?
We have that on a list. We have probably 20-plus sidewalk projects on a list. That's one of them.
Okay.
So, this is one of those, sure, no, that's okay, and it may be something that we need to be looking at. I know we have some funds that are set aside in the bond to go towards sidewalks and greenways. If our lock four project that we've got doesn't come through for that grant application, we're probably gonna need to be talking about what our priorities are. And so, as we go through this next budget cycle, I expect that we'll be talking about projects like that one.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it, Nick. Thanks, man.
Yes, sir.
Thank you both. Anyone else? Seeing no one wishing to bring forward any other business this evening, and we'll move on to public recognition on non-engineering related items. This is like the public recognition at the beginning of the meeting, but it's for items that were not on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak, you may raise your hand. You may do that if you're on the telephone by pressing star nine. If you are actually on your computer, you will hover over the raise your hand function and press, and then the take that you would like to speak. So with that, I will turn over to Mr. Hensel, and he will recognize cases.
Very good. We do have someone who's raised their hand, Renee Saunders. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Renee Saunders, 2092 Rodman Boulevard, Galatin. Thank you for allowing me to speak. A couple of weeks ago, I asked, or actually asked, what the Galatin City Council, or what the City of Galatin itself was doing about the homeless problem, and was allowed to participate on a cooperative Zoom call today, which was very interesting with Dr., I'm sorry, Pastor Deborah. She has some pretty significant needs, and has a few ideas about how Galatin might be able to help with the homeless population that she knows they have. And the reason I say that is because one of the city council persons made a comment to, as to, you know, the number of people who may be homeless in Galatin, because when they drive around the city, they can't see them. But it seems like there is a significant homeless problem in Galatin. Mayor Brown, I think you spoke with the council after the discussion, and suggested that if they wanted to form a committee, or a task force, or some other type body to look into the problem, and whether the city might be able to offer any solutions, that you all might be able to do that. But since that discussion, I have not heard anyone else broach the subject. And I know, Mr. Alexander, you had some ideas about Swanson's Nursing Home, and I don't know if maybe you might be the person to get this started, but you know, it's 14 degrees outside right now, and unfortunately, the unhoused or homeless are not gonna go away. And we, as a community, who are looking at so many housing options for people who can afford to buy a home, but no housing options for someone who can't afford a home, even on a temporary basis. You know, we have citizens of all ilks in the City of Galatin, and I honestly think, I would hope, and ask you all to consider forming some sort of committee or task force to look into what the City of Galatin might be able to do for their less fortunate community people.
Thank you, Dr. Saunders. I, for one, would love to have the information that you have received shared with us. That would help us. I do know that our police department has been working hard today. I know Chief Bandy and Chief Sars were actually out working with some one who did not have a home, and tried to get her some help. So we are trying to stay on top of it, and trying to identify people in our community that, I'm so sorry, y'all, that may be homeless, but, you know, but some of them stay very, very well hidden. So it may be that Ms. Austin has better contacts than we do, and she is always welcome to share that information with me, with our police department, and we will certainly do our best to help. Of course, the way that we can benefit the programs that are in existence would probably, as I mentioned before, best be done through our community enhancement programs. So, again, thank you for keeping it on our radar, and we are trying to at least get, you know, some sense of what the needs are out there, but we're different places, and people have different expectations. So someone that can help us congregate and has greater experience certainly would be helpful. Okay.
Mayor, can I ask our attorney, Dr. Tom McCauley, a question?
Ask who? I'm sorry, sir. I mean, yes.
Our city attorney. Ms. Tom McCauley?
Yes.
You remember, last year, I just casually mentioned it to you about what procedure, or what liability would the city have if we looked at something like Swanson Nursing Home? If you could give me some more information on that, I would appreciate it.
As I told you that night, that was the last discussion, I believe it was last year, or it was the last time that this was discussed, that you brought that issue up, and we would have to have some in-depth conversations with our carrier to start off with. But there are lots of potential liabilities out there. I've been to some seminars on that, and that's the reason that a lot of cities don't have their own homeless shelters. They may donate to 501(c)(3) that do have those, but a lot of cities, other than really large cities, don't have homeless shelters. I think of the city's liability on bringing people in, and also all of their, all of the things that they might bring with them, or just, there's a myriad of issues that we would need to discuss. If you want me to reach out to our insurance carrier to begin with, they're gonna have a lot of questions. I can't just say, what's our liability gonna be? We're gonna, that's a very long process that we would have to do a study on.
Well, and I would throw in there too, that it's beyond our liabilities. It's also the cost of the facility and the programming service. I don't know, and so that, you know, I think it's, I think that would be a very, very large under. You know, so many needs that we operate slowly with them.
Guys, I have to say something here. I'm certain, I pretty feel pretty certain that there are some homeless people in Galatin. But I can tell you that I went out three nights in a row and spent hours, not, I went out three nights, not three nights in a row. Two of the nights I carried my wife. And a Polaris side-by-side that you can actually drive on the road, you could drive it in the woods. I went up and down the railroad tracks. I went everywhere around Galatin I was told to go. I haven't seen one person in a tent or anything living out. Now, I might have been at the wrong place, wrong time. I'm willing to help somebody financially. I tried to seek them out, but I have not seen it yet. I'm sorry. There are several spots, Sean, over here in my district that people stay. Some of you may remember that a young man, last name Mr. Adam, used to live in a car right there at the Falk of Red River in 386. That lot over to the left for many years, not just month, but for many years, that he lived in that car until he died. And now, in the head and track, there has been some people staying down there with just boxes and blankets that I've seen. And I've had Ms. Austin call me also about assisting and helping people with no place to go, because we had talked about one time maybe using the old Clearview Park clubhouse to house somebody for a period of time. That's really why I was kind of trying to find out what obligation, what liability would the city have? We dived off into something like this. But there are, there are a lot of buildings that's around here in Sunday County that could be very useful shelter, a lot of places that, you know, you can use projects like people that's living there to do work and stuff on them, to bring them up to par, or bring them up to code, or whatever term you want to use. But it's just something I've been thinking about for quite some time, because there are a lot of people, really, that I know over in the 5th District that have no place to go. Because I took in a family one time, a white family with two kids and a dog. And I let them stay in my garage because they didn't have any place to go. So there are people, especially around the 5th District, that I've seen that I know that's homeless.
I have a question. Has the Stay Warm Shelter ever asked the city for the grants that we give out to the nonprofits?
I don't think so. I mean, I know that they've not participated in our patient hearings. That leads me to believe they've not yet requested, but they're certainly welcome to.
You know, the only thing that it brought to my attention is I seen it on the news, and it was, I might, my numbers might be wrong, but it said that there was like 126 people in Galatin that was homeless, and that got my attention. So that's when I started going out trying to find some people, and I'm willing to pitch in and help, but I haven't found any yet. And I'm saying there's not, okay, John D?
Right, yeah. I think Ms. Austin, if you really want to, you know, to contribute.
Right, yeah. I think Ms. Austin, if you really want to, you know, to contribute or help in some kind of way, you will contact her and I would get that number for you, Sean, if you want to talk to her sometime. Because she's been working with them, with homeless people for quite some time, along with First Baptist Church Winchester Street here in Gallatin.
Yeah, I wish you would call me. I'd love to. Thank you, John D.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else who should speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items this evening? I don't see anyone.
Maybe we need, excuse me, ma'am, maybe we need to look at another alternative on this homeless. If someone would be, if maybe the city could buy, well, I'll say Swanson Nursing Home at a reasonable price and turn the ownership and responsibility over to someone else if they're willing to do it. And then use donations, as long as the donations come in, it could survive.
They are, I mean, they are buildings and property around that could be done. Just, I guess, who would be responsible, who would manage it, who would be liable for it is the question. I mean, we got Salam's on over there on Small Street. That we're not doing anything with downstairs. It's a lot of space in classroom downstairs because that's where the cafeteria used to be at school. I used to attend. So there are buildings and facilities. We just have to have some kind of plan as for liability and who'll be responsible and where the money would come from to support a thing like that. But there is a need, for sure.
I was on a call today with the minister along with PJ. And the call was, am I muted? No. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was on the call today with Deborah Austin and PJ about all of this. The biggest concern and the need that they felt they wanted was to have one specific space that they can bring the homeless to. For whatever reason, right now, they're bringing them to a church in Gallatin and then a church in Hendersonville, and they're back and forth. So they're being housed, but in many various locations. It's very difficult for the people picking them up, dropping them off, and then getting them to another place the next day. So that's what the issue was that I heard today. I was a little late in getting on the call because of the link that was sent to me. But they definitely had a lot of people discussing what was going on. And there definitely appears to be a need. And these people are definitely going in and out of shelters. But they wanted to see if the city or somebody could come up with one facility that the people can be brought in and out of.
I think we need to be careful, make sure there's Sunny County residents. We don't want mid-state's population to come in on us. But if we can help our local residents, that'd be a different story.
She was indicating that they all are from Gallatin, so I don't know. I'm just reporting what I heard.
And the help needs to be temporary.
Yes.
Based on need, probably.
And I really want to thank Dr. Sanders for, again, bringing that to our attention. But yes, I've been thinking about that same thing, Dr. Sanders. So thank you so much for bringing that up tonight to start the dialogue again.
Do other cities run homeless shelters? Or are they mostly all privately funded and owned?
I know that there's some cities on the west coast and northwest that run homeless shelters. But most ones that I'm familiar with are either in Tennessee or Florida. Typically, they're a 501(c)(3) run organization, often supported to some degree financially by governments.
Like Nashville Rescue Mission?
Nonprofit. Anyone else with anything this evening? I don't see anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items.
Mayor Brown, this is Dr. Saunders. I have my hand up again. And I'm sorry if this is out of order, but the discussion that you all are having is wonderful. This is a, well, I mean, I don't understand what the reluctance is here unless this is improper to form an ad hoc committee of some sort to look into. As several of you have questions about what can and can't be done. And although this is a very wonderful and stimulating conversation, I feel as though it's just going to end tonight and then no one will be doing anything more going forward. I think it's unfortunate for the councilperson who suggests that if you all were to have some sort of city-based shelter or even if the city was a major partner in a 501(c)(3) running a shelter, that it should only be for Gallatin residents. Unfortunately, the unhoused or homeless are human beings. And they certainly do move around from place to place. And I understand that, you know, we have $12 and we want our $12 to only go to Gallatin residents. But when we're talking about something as serious as homelessness, I don't know that it's really fair for us to be talking on that kind of a level. You know, we're all human beings and we should be interested in, you know, the needs of the people who are in need at that time. So Ms. George, thank you for speaking up. You were on the call today. And I think we both learned some very valuable information. And again, I would just implore you all, if it is proper, to form some sort of ad hoc committee so that you all can look into this and have some of the questions answered that you've asked tonight. And again, I'm sorry, Mayor Brown, if this is inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. It is actually a public comment period. I think that you should be able to gauge that your comment was impactful if there was lots of discussion following it. But it would not be proper for them, for us to take any action on that this evening. But I do think that there's a lot of interest. And I think that if we can follow up outside of a meeting with information and interested parties, I bet that you might have some people interested in delving into this further and seeing what opportunities might be to help the population who doesn't have an hour. Anyone else with anything this evening? With that, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Post to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilman Overton. We have a second and we have a unanimous vote. I'm certain. I hope you all have a good evening.
David Tell, I'll call him if you can.
Say, stay in. So that our responders and our public works departments can do the work that they are trying to do. So take care, everyone. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.